Well, go ahead and call this June 26th meeting to order. The next item on our agenda is observing a moment of silence and then I would ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge, if we would all rise and observe for a moment of silence.
Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is an update in regards to animal care and adoption center.
Okay. Before we get started tonight, I do want to take the opportunity to thank the board and to thank Craig for the wonderful NAMMing opportunity to have my name show up in an area for the animal care and adoption center that is such a dear, dear place to me and thank you all and I can't talk anymore about it or I'll start to cry.
Absolutely.
Tonight, I'm going to tag team this presentation with Marilyn Wheaton. Marilyn's our volunteer and education coordinator. The director, Islande Mahian, would be here tonight, but she's taken a couple of days of very well-deserved vacation on a trip that's been planned for some time. So, the first thing we're going to talk about is we're going to revisit sort of the mission of this facility. The center was always designed to be a multi-functioning facility. It's where people come to adopt animals, but it's also where they come to volunteer, to learn, and to just have fun. And if you look at the left-hand bottom corner, you see someone you might recognize who was having fun at the grand opening. The center was, the philosophy of the center is built around three major concepts. Adoption, of course, being one, but also community and education. We were so pleased to be at the grand opening and have somewhere between, we sort of lost count of the number of people because they were coming all day, but we know somewhere between 350 and 400 people show up that day, which really showed to us that the citizens really appreciated and it was a place where people want to come. Adoption, and I'm going to talk a little bit about, of course, numbers, that's what I do. So, we're going to talk about numbers at the facility. But before I get started, I want to mention something about the inmate work group. They, literally, if you can imagine when you see these numbers, there's a lot of cleanup that needs to be done at this facility. And we've had the inmates there, hopefully, we have them every day, seven days a week. They do a tremendous job. It is just a huge benefit to this center and staff. And after having been there and actually seen them working, I began to understand that it was also a benefit to the inmates. Being at this facility is really something that means something to them, I believe, and it really is a two-fold win. When we get work done, we save staff time, and then the inmates get the benefit of being there as well. So, I wanted to mention that before we get started. Now, let's talk about the numbers at the facility. How many animals came into the center? In the first 50 days, we've had 245 animals, 125 cats, 117 dogs, one ferret, and two dogs.
Were the mice planned or did they just show up?
No, I think they were, someone brought them in.
They were probably mentioned.
Oh, okay.
See, there you go.
Wanted to make sure we didn't need to talk to our pest control. Okay, okay, just checking, just checking.
Not rats, just two mice.
Just checking.
And that number, if you break it out, equals about five animals a day. And that's a lot. Keep in mind, when you compare that to the old building, in total, only 36 dogs could be housed there. And if you see the officer in the picture on the right-hand side, he came in the morning of the grand opening. He found those two kittens on the side of the road and brought them over to the center that day. So, how many did we have leave? Well, in the first 50 days, we had 186 animals leave. 73 were adopted, 49 went back home to their owners, 34 went to rescue groups. And if you can imagine at all, there's a mice rescue group. Who knew? And you might want to look at the picture down at the bottom right-hand corner. That happens to be Marty's new dog, Ralph, along with his family. We also had 30 animals that went to foster homes. So, we had 3.7 a day leaving. 66% of those are being pets that are either reunited with their previous owners or being adopted to new homes. In the first seven weeks, we had 3/4 of the animals coming in, also leaving during that time frame. And the important piece about that is to understand that it's not a dumping area. It's not a warehouse for animals. It's a place where they come to and then they find either their home or a new home, and that's what we're seeing. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Marilyn. She's going to tell you about the phone stuff that's been going on over at the center.
Hello, everyone. As she said, my name is Marilyn Wheaton and I'm the volunteer and education coordinator over at the animal care and adoption center. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the community involvement that we've had at the center, as well as some of the education that we've been doing, mostly me, since I'm in charge of that department. We've been doing a lot of, a lot of education with kids. But we'll start with our community. Our community has really rallied around the center. We have people coming every day, at least once a day, to donate either monetary donations or physical donations of supplies. We've had several grants, we've had monetary donations from individuals, and then we've also had some fundraising events at the center. We had a Paint Your Pet night where you actually, you paint a picture of your pet, you don't actually paint on your pet. That was hosted by Honeysuckle Studios. And then we have a dog training class. They actually meet weekly, it's a seven-week class, hosted by Blacksburg Dogs with Stephanie Wilkie. And they do a training class in the center on every Thursday. So, if anyone needs help with their dogs, we can, we can help you out with that. And then we have a few other events that we're going to start, you know, people have talked to me about doing in the future. Lula Row Clothing Company, they had an online fundraiser for us recently that raised $150 in donations. And they actually can do pop-up shops, so they're thinking of doing one in the facility where people can, you know, if they come to shop, they can also look at animals or vice versa. And if they buy anything, they're donating to the center. And then we have tons and tons of in-kind donations. We have PetSmart, Petco, PracticeFly, Walmart, lots of places will donate either food that they can't use for some reason or food that they, they think that we need to have. And Spectrum Brands does the same thing. A representative from them came and took a private tour of the facility and they said that, you know, if we needed any help with anything, just let them know. Tantone had a huge fundraiser. And then a really cool thing that a lot of kids have been doing is that instead of having gifts for their birthday, they've actually asked for donations for the animals instead of birthday gifts. So, that has become extremely popular. We usually have at least one a week, if not more, like three, of kids coming in with their birthday donations. Another really cool thing that happened, IDEX Laboratories, which does a lot of veterinary blood work and things like that, lots of tests, they had a day of free testing. So, Main Street Veterinary Clinic actually offered to donate their time and their supplies to come test every single animal at the shelter. So, the dogs were tested for four tick-borne diseases, or three tick-borne diseases and heartworm. And then the cats were tested for feline leukemia and feline FIB. So, they actually volunteered their time. They had to draw blood from every single animal in that facility and run the tests. Took the entire day to run the tests. And then MWI, who supplies many of their medications, actually supplied us with a free dose of heartworm prevention for each of the dogs. So, that was a really wonderful thing where they got involved with us. We also have tons and tons of volunteers. I do volunteer training two times a week now, on Wednesdays at 5:30 and Saturdays at 10:30. I used to do it almost every day, just to get everyone through, but we're down to twice a week now. I've had about 250 people sign up, and this was from last week, so it's even more now. And then I've trained about 200 people or a little more to be dog walkers. We just show them how to fit the harnesses, where they can walk them, talk a little bit about dog body language and training. So, I've had almost 200 people go through that training. So, the dogs get out, pretty much every dog, every day gets out at least once. So, their temperament and their personalities have really been able to stabilize. You don't get that kennel stress that we used to see at the old shelter, and I think that's helping them go out faster. And people have a ton of fun. They sit at the front desk. We have one volunteer, David, who is all about the paperwork. He makes sure we have copies of everything, everything is filed correctly. We have a volunteer named Michelle, who makes sure she answers all the phones and teaches new volunteers how to enter paperwork. And then we also have other volunteer groups. There's a picture there at the bottom left of the Virginia Tech Circle K International. They helped us at the grand opening. And then Poles comes about once a month as a group to walk dogs, and we also get a monetary donation with that every time they volunteer. Target is setting up a program where their employees can donate to us. And there's, there's a couple others that I can't think of off the top of my head right now. But we have lots of companies in the area that want to get their employees out and, and volunteering with us. There's some of our regular volunteers, we put up their pictures so we can make them famous. But we couldn't do this without them, we love them. And we're, we're always running around and it's, it's great to have them there supporting us. All right, now the education piece. I have been doing tons and tons of tours. And this all started when school was already out, so I'm guessing it'll be even busier when school gets that session. I actually have done everyone from preschool all the way up to college-age students. I went to Virginia Tech and talked to the entire freshman class in the animal poultry science class, talking about other options than going to that school. So, I talked to them about that, it was their seminar class. And then I also have been talking to the, there's a companion animal emphasis that is starting up there. So, they have an annual tour every year where they come and I show them the facility, talk about animal care. And then we are also working on for next year, getting started with having part of their class actually be coming to the shelter every week for a lab, learning to work with animals, learning about shelter medicine, things like that. And then we have lots of other younger kids. It's great to start them young with proper animal care. Rainbow Riders comes every week, or every other week, depending on their schedule. And we have a different theme. We, one week with water, one week with communication. So, we talked about bathing and water intake for animals, signs of dehydration. We've talked about how animals communicate with us since they can't speak and you have to understand what they're trying to tell you. Early challenges, we have a preschool group that came last week. I have a first-grade group coming this week. And they love to see all the animals and learn how to pet them, and they have tons of questions. I love answering all the kids' questions. There's a few others listed there. Louis's Future Leaders, Officer Louis Heslip, who passed away a little over a year ago, that is in memory of him. And they made a huge donation to us, and they also, they donate a lot of their time and fundraising abilities. And we have a couple of happy stories here for you. This is Juno, she came in as stray and she started out with a little bit of a limp that seemed to get better, so we weren't too worried. And then the longer she stayed there, it started getting worse again. So, we went and had x-rays and her elbow at some point had just been shattered and had not been taken care of. So, Virginia Tech Vet School actually offered to amputate it for free as a learning experience. That was absolutely wonderful. And as soon as they took that leg off, we had what we call a personality transplant for Juno. She is now, she was adopted by her foster home. They took her in thinking they would have to keep her separate from their dogs and their cats because she didn't like them. As soon as that leg was off, she did a complete 180, and she's now living very happily with them and it's all healed up. But we've been working with the vet school a lot on things like that. And then Bam Bam, another happy story here. I think a lot of you have seen his picture around.
Yeah.
So, he came in, is in as a stray as well. He's a little bit quirky, he liked to chase the lights and shadows on the wall. You may have seen videos of that. But he didn't really get along with other dogs. He could walk with them, but he was, you know, he didn't want to share his food or his toys. But after 324 days at the shelter, he did find his home, and there's some cute pictures. The left, bottom left is actually his ride home. He was already that happy. And then the next day, they took him to Kibbles on Main, took some cute pictures of him there. He's doing wonderful. And that is our goal, is to keep, you know, the ones that have some trouble, work with them and find the right place for them. As Carol said, we don't want to warehouse animals that are problem children. We want to work with them and find them a good place to go, even if it takes 324 days or more. And this is a huge thank you from all of us. Pretty much everyone on here, about 50/50, have been adopted, but if you think anyone would like to come home with you, we'll arrange that. Do you guys have any questions or anything for me? Any?
Oh, any questions, Supervisor Shepard, Supervisor Demont?
I don't, thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
Oh, you know, I've got to say something, I have three things to say. First of all, I went over there today and I went in my cat room. Yeah. And there were three kittens, 10 weeks old, and two of them looked exactly like cats I'd had in the past. I don't know who arranged that to make me feel like I need to take those home, but it was, it was definitely. And so then I visited around and I want to say that whenever you go past that place during the day, doesn't matter what day it is, there's always activity, there's always citizens there, there are always cars there. And I want to personally thank you and the group for, and that includes Ms. Edmonds, for giving us a tour on May 20th to the VACO Board. We had people from all over the state of Virginia and they, they loved our animal care and adoption center. They, they didn't know what to expect when they went in, but they really, really thought it was a nice facility. And I think what also impressed them, the people that were working there, the volunteers and the staff, the way they care about the animals. And I've brought, I've brought over a few people who never wanted to go to our shelter because they felt like if they went to our old shelter, they would have to take a dog home. And they go, "I really don't want to go over there, Mary, I might take something home." I said, "You know what? This is a kind of place that you can go and you can engage with those animals and you don't feel like, 'Okay, I have to take an animal home this very moment,' because you know that they're in a good, healthy, safe environment with people that really love and care for them." And so, I've actually gotten people to come in based on that, and I've gotten you some volunteers too. But one that just wants to do laundry, but anyway.
That's wonderful, we have a lot of laundry.
But, you know, I'm just, you know, I'm just very excited. I'm going to always be excited about this because it took 22 years to happen. It's an asset to our community, it's a positive thing. You all do a remarkable job, and I want to thank you and the volunteers again publicly for everything that you've done. And Ms. Edmonds again. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you both.
Supervisor King?
Well, I just want to thank you for what you do and especially the volunteers. I mean, they're taking time away from their families and their animals at home to be companions to them animals, and I do appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Perkins?
I want to know when we're going to be on CNN as a special. We need to write somebody on the TV and say, "We have a story to tell."
We do have a story to tell.
We do, we really do. And I think, I don't know exactly how to get hold of all of them, but anybody here running these cameras knows. I think that's what we ought to do, because I think everybody ought to know that there is a way to make your pets, those with no home, healthy, happy. And also to educate the community about, especially the children, as to what's going on and, and how they need to treat animals. So, hopefully, in another generation, we won't find people that are not too happy with animals and oftentimes mistreat them. I had two dogs that came in through the adoption of, from really the Humane Society that was working with it. And I'll tell you, we, they were, they were loved and they were really wonderful, wonderful pets, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Just nothing but a big thank you to, for everybody that's involved. We needed it and we have it, and we need to take real good care of it and make sure that we get to use it less and less because we don't have any meat dogs. That would be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. I'm just going to shut this down.
Oh, okay.
I don't have anything else to say other than, as you can see from Marilyn's presentation, we are so fortunate to have really great staff and great volunteers, and that's what makes this one. I did have something else to say.
The next item on our agenda is public hearings, the first of which is a, one, a proposed boundary adjustment agreement with the town of Blacksburg, Betty Estes, revocable trust property at 701 Graves Avenue. The Board of Supervisors intent to approve a boundary adjustment agreement with the town of Blacksburg to incorporate within the town approximately 1.512 acres located at 701 Graves Avenue in the unincorporated area of Montgomery County in the Mount Tabor Magisterial District, more particularly described as tax map number 41-A71, parcel ID 006184, shown more particularly on the attached exhibit plat entitled Corporate Boundary Adjustment Sketch, 701 Graves Avenue Site Plan, Blacksburg, Virginia, dated December the 16th, 2016. There is no one signed up to speak on this in regards to this issue, but you did not have to sign up. Any individual who wishes to come forward to speak on this public hearing will be given five minutes. This is the board's opportunity to listen to what you have to say, not to necessarily respond to your comments. Many times during the course of this evening, you're forced to listen to us. So, if anyone would like to come forward and speak, you're more than happy to do so. I would ask speakers, if there's more than one, to just have a seat on the front row. Sir, you look like you're coming up.
I'm ready to go. Thank you. My name is Keith Boyd, I'm a heard prophet in Blackbird. We're representing the Estes family on this request. Really straightforward request, they have two parcels there, one in the town, one in the county. They would like to combine those two into one larger parcel within the town limits. It's about 3 and 3/4 acres total. There's a house there, now it's existing, I think you have a flat that you comped to pay in your packet. As far as, Marty asked me to maybe say a couple words about future plans. They may subdivide the larger parcel further later on after the boundary adjustment is done, potentially to build maybe some more single-family homes and that into our parcel. So, with that, that's all I had to say. If there's any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Thank you. Yes, and again, normally, this is our time to listen to the public and, and so we normally don't inquire how, but since, yes, Ms... But, yes, that's right, you're the applicant. Is there any other questions? Any questions? Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this public hearing? Hearing no one else or seeing no one else coming forward, I'll go ahead and move to the next public hearing, which was advertised in the New River Valley section of the Run of Times on May 7th and 14th. An ordinance amending Chapter 10 entitled Zoning Ordinance of the Code of Montgomery County, Virginia, by amending Section 10-45 to eliminate content-based restrictions and regulations in the county's signed ordinance in order to comply with the decision rendered by the United States Supreme Court in Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona. Emily?
Thank you. Good evening. I guess it's going to be a night of tag-team presentations. Bree Hopkins, our development planner, is going to be presenting with me tonight. It's not that it's that long of a presentation, but it breaks it up a little bit. I'm going to give you some of the background. And talk to you a little bit about how we started and why we started. And then we're going to get into the actual text, and Bree's going to give you a breakdown. In your packet, you received a memo with a little bit of this information, as well as a table that showed you how this compares to the current ordinance, how the proposed ordinance compares to the current, and then a copy of the text. So, we're just going to walk you through some of that. So, we really wanted to start with why, why we got started on this. Montgomery County and many localities across the nation have had to take a look at their signed ordinance to make sure that it met this new qualification of being content-neutral. And so, Montgomery County is doing it, both towns are in various stages. And it's important to bring that up because we are holding our second hearing this evening. We have the Planning Commission hearing already, so we're sort of coming to the end, whereas the towns are just beginning their hearing. So, it's going to, we went and talked to the chamber as a group to make sure that we could talk a little bit about how everyone's going to be talking about signs for a while, and this is why. So, with the new guidance that we have, based on the Supreme Court decision, what can we regulate? We can still regulate the size, the locations, whether it's lighted or unlighted, whether the message is fixed or on an electronic display. Commercial and residential properties are allowed to have different requirements, on premise and off, and then time restrictions on advertising one-time events. So, that's some of the overarching guidance that we were able to use as we took our current ordinance and tried to make it fit this new goal. So, just to give you a quick overview of the timeline, we actually started back in June 2016. That's when Marty sent over the draft ordinance that he had used, starting with the statewide model ordinance. So, on June 10th, Marty sent that over and said, "Take a look at it," and so we started. And we spent the summer and the fall kind of making sure that what came over worked for us. Not every locality has the same type of zoning we have or has the same type of issues that are specific to Montgomery County. And we knew what was working in our planning ordinance and wanted to make sure that we could just meet that new content-neutral standard. And so, we really started with the outreach in the winter. We attended several different webinars and seminars, kept continuously editing. And this spring and summer, I've been working on some more outreach and meetings with the commission, as well as the hearings, and hopefully, adoption this summer as well. So, when we talk about the text itself, we did start with the model ordinance, as I mentioned. We went into some further research using resources like the Signage Foundation Incorporated. They specifically talked about best practices with temporary signs, which, as we'll get into a little bit later, is a common issue that localities struggle with. If it's only temporary, how much permitting do you really need? And, but then how do you balance whether someone takes advantage of it? So, we spent a lot of time looking at that. And then we went to several different, like I said, trainings and seminars, but we really want to focus on the one I have shown here. The April 4th seminar, which was put on by the Land Use Education Program, was an all-day seminar. And Bree and I went up, it was put on by both private and public sector, and so it was very, very low cost. And it gave us the ability, since we were sort of coming to the end of the work on our ordinance, to ask a lot of questions, hear from other folks. And really, some of the folks, like the International Sign Association and Sign Research Foundation that were there, were able to answer questions we had and talk to us about some best practices. So, what we learned is that we had a very strong draft product, which was good. So what we learned is that we had a very strong draft product, which was good. It fit in with our timeline and wanted to keep it moving forward. Again, that all localities struggle with temporary signage. And that electronic message boards, we already knew we wanted to tweak that a little bit, but we also learned that what we had was really good. And that's in how it's measured and how it's monitored. We already had some very strong language in there. And we learned that we had what folks are looking for as they come through these ordinances, to make sure that you have these different clauses in there and to make sure that you're differentiating in a way that's content neutral. So I wanna also talk a little bit about the outreach that we've done. This is specific to mostly outside of Planning Commission. We reached out, the very first time we reached out was to the, we ended up going to the Climate Subcommittee meeting with the chamber, and that was a good opportunity. I went along with the Planning Director from the town of Blacksburg and the Planning Director from town Christiansburg. And we just sort of opened the dialogue and started talking about why you're gonna hear so many people talking about signage. And we walked them through kind of what we would all be doing and what our processes look like. I also spoke to the full Chamber Board in March, and then we just recently went back and met with the Business Climate Subcommittee again in June, just to let them know what the final draft will flag and some of the common questions we had had some of the last weeks that we've done. We've had that ordinance out on our website and continuously updated from the time we started putting it out there till now. At different times, there were even dated versions up there so people could track changes. We also, the table that was provided in your packet, that's been out on the website since May, just so that it made it a little bit easier for people who don't wanna read through all the texts, you could sort of get a quick summary. Our Planning Commission held its hearing in May, and what's important about that, because they always do that before we get to you guys, is we did not advertise this hearing concurrently. We wanted to make sure that we allow time to adapt and make any changes that we might wanna make before this one. So typically, we have Planning Commission in about a week or a week and a half later, we have a meeting here, and we separated those out this time. And then we held an additional meeting here in the Government Center on June 13th. That was just before Planning Commission met on the 14th for their recommendation. This is a list of the Planning Commission meetings that we had signs on the agenda. And so this is probably extra painful for Chair Tuck, since he's our liaison. This gives you a sense of how many meetings he's been through where we talked about signs. In different levels of specificity, sometimes if we just had an issue we were wrestling with, we would bring it to the commission and say, you know, "Here's some options," and let them sort of work through it. So we did make them go through the whole ordinance at all 10 meetings, just like five. So right now, I did mention the table a couple of times. I'm gonna turn it over to Bree, and she's gonna start diving into some of those specifics that are in the text.
Good evening. So as Emily stated, you were provided with a copy of this table. It's also been on our website, and it was handed out at the Planning Commission. It was prepared in order of the draft ordinance sections, so you'll know what has changed. And I'm gonna go over those one by one, and then we'll take questions. The first is general provisions. And basically, the Supreme Court rules that we have to make sure that our findings and purpose and intent section are compliant and that we provide more validity to the ordinance. So we have added our basis, a strong purpose statement, severability clause, and then we also stated compliance with the First Amendment. The good news is that did not require a whole lot of work because it was in the draft ordinance that Marty had sent over to us. So then before we get into specifics, I want to go over what is a sign, because this has come up in every meeting that we have had. Basically, it's any object or display or something that is visible from a public area. So that would be a public right-of-way or another public property. It's designed and used to communicate information to persons about something on the property. It can involve words, letters, logos, colors, which I'll get into later. And the thing that we want you to remember is it does not include the customary display of merchandise for sale. So if you have a site and you were displaying equipment on the lawn that you offer for sale, meat tractors is a good example in Montgomery County, that is not considered a sign to have your tractor parked out front. Just like if they have a display in the window of items that they have for sale inside, that is not considered a sign either. So on color, this has come up in every meeting because there was a huge misunderstanding and people were saying, "Why are you regulating color?" Well, we're not going to tell you, "I don't like the color orange, you can't use it." What we are telling you is many businesses use color along with symbology to brand their business. And I think all of the ones at the bottom here are probably easily recognizable. Shell is the example I'm gonna use, because if you drive down the street here in town, you will notice that that Shell station does not have any letters on it whatsoever. It simply has the Shell logo. So if a permit application came in for something like this, we would count that logo as part of their signage square footage allowance. Definitions, we have made hopefully a lot simpler. Currently, all of our sign definitions are scattered throughout the definition section 1061 in our current code. We have moved this to the sign section 1045, so it is right there, so you do not have to constantly flip back and forth to determine what a definition should be. We've also added graphics, so people have a clear understanding of what a particular type of sign is and what we are talking about. We've deleted classifications based on content, because we do have to be content neutral. We have several of those, and you can see some of the examples here on the screen, that we had to do away with and combine them into different categories. Permit requirements, we do require permits for certain signs now, permanent signs. We will continue to require them unless they are specifically exempted in the ordinance. Language outlining some bill requirements has been strengthened. That was not in our previous ordinance. Supreme Court has said that we need to be clear on what we're going to require for permitting, and we need to establish a reasonable time for review. So staff has established a time of 30-day reviews. That is consistent with other review periods in our ordinance. It gives us time to look at a property, if it's a complex property that has a lot of signage and they are required to submit a comprehensive sign plan, then that gets into a review similar to a site plan, and we do say 30 days is our policy for that review as well. Normally, if I have a sign permit come in now, it's issued within five to 10 business days at the most. So we do not see the 30-day will be something that will be, normally if you're to, it will normally be done in a much quicker mode. Currently, we do allow you to apply for a special use permit for height only, and it's done through the Board of Zoning Appeals. We changed that with this ordinance because of the way we had to reduce the classification of signage and the flexibility that we were not allowed to give. We are trying to offer that flexibility through a special use permit. So now you can get it not just for height, but you can get it for area. The hardship, even though it goes to the BTA, is not the standard state code hardship that you're familiar with with variances. Basically, this includes the size of the development, topography, any other limitations that would exist on the site. We can increase the square footage, we can increase the height if needed. With that, we will be requiring a comprehensive sign plan, because most of the time, it's on a unique site, and so we need to see exactly how many signs they're going to have, so we'll know exactly how much square footage we need, and we can plan for future if they need it. In our general provisions, we also go over permits not required. We removed all the sign classifications that were not content neutral, and we did add minor signs. Minor signs are those that are like four square feet, they're not visible from the public road or an adjoining property, so they're not counted in the calculated square footage for a site. We added language for window signs based on the best practices, several reasons. Health, safety, and welfare is one, so things are visible from the outside in. The other reason is to be fair to all business owners. So if you have a business that has a cinder block building, it may not have as many windows in the front of it as a business that may be all windows in the front. Well, is it fair that they would be side by side and one business owner could conceivably almost double their square footage of signage, whereas the other owner would be limited because he didn't have windows? The other thing is, we want to make sure that if you have windows, that we can see in them in cases of emergency. And then you also have to consider that this does not consider the items that are not signs. So for instance, business hours, the forms of payment they take, small little flyers people tend to post on their windows, most of those are not visible from a public right-of-way or a public property. So conceivably, they could still have 100% of their window covered and it not be a sign. Prohibited signs, we removed and revised the sign classifications, again, to comply with the U.S. Supreme Court, and we grouped them into three categories. General provisions, material, and location-based. The Planning Commission and some other people have discussed vehicle or trailer signs, because that is one of the included signs. This does not include signs that are used in a business. So if you are a contractor, or if you work for a contractor and you drive home a truck that has the name of the business on the side of that, the sole purpose of that vehicle is to support the business, it's not to advertise the business. Now, if you have a box trailer that doesn't have tags, it's not titled, it's not operable, and you park it on the property and you put a banner on the side of it, that would be prohibited, because at that point, the sole purpose of that vehicle is to serve as a sign. In general provisions, we changed the measurement of sign area and height. We did consolidate that into one area. Before, in our other ordinance, you had to look one place for area and you had to look another place for height. So it was kind of confusing, it was hard for some of the industry to find exactly what they were looking for. We also changed the way we measure signs, and if you'll look here, this is currently how we measure the sign. So you do one box around your text and logo, and that's your square footage of your sign. The language we have now, we can allow you to measure with a maximum of three rectangles. So you'll see these three rectangles here, that eliminated that blank space. Therefore, it increases the amount of square footage you can have, because you're not counting that blank space that's not used. The sign values for multiple occupants on one parcel, for instance, a shopping center that remains, we have not changed that. A comprehensive sign plan is required, so we can make sure each tenant's getting square footage and the sign bonus is being utilized. Maximum height of 12 feet has also remained unchanged. That is currently in our ordinance. Maintenance and removal, prior, we have stated that the sign has to be removed within 30 days and become an obsolete. We understand that sometimes that's not possible, so we have extended that to 180 days. But we are not requiring removal now, we will allow you to blank it. So what that means is you can render it blank, so that way, if you are a landowner, let's say it's a rental space, your new tenant can use that same existing structure and not have to build another one. So we think that that is very beneficial to people who have rental property. Emily touched on our electronic sign. We changed those guidelines. Before, we only allowed you to have 25% of your sign area as an electronic message board. That was very prohibited, prohibitive for our businesses. Everything is going technology, everything's going electronic. So we knew that that was something we wanted to change. We looked at it during the seminar, and basically, our other language was remaining the same, but we do allow you to have a full electronic message board now. It cannot change more than every five seconds. That is a standard industry guideline. Basically, if it changes more than that, it's distracting. If it changes less than that, it's distracting, because you're waiting on it to change and you wanna see what it says. So we think we are very good in guidelines at five. It cannot flash and it cannot flicker. That has always been the industry standard. Our non-conforming signs, this section is unchanged. It still complies with state code. We have not changed that at all. We have added sign requirements related to non-commercial signs. Those, that's new language, and basically, it's required by the United States Supreme Court. They have said that wherever we permit commercial content, we have to also permit non-commercial content subject to the same code requirements. So we have added that to the ordinance. Now, all those signs that we had earlier, we have consolidated into three categories: permanent, temporary, and flags. Permanent signs, we have included this table in the front of this section, so people will understand what we would consider a permanent sign, what we would consider a temporary sign, and then of course, what a flag is. Temporary signs, as stated, has been the most difficult to convert. Many of you may know, in our current ordinance, we call out real estate signs, we call out contractor signs, we call out political signs. To know what they are, you have to look at them. So we had to take all of that language out. We have been creative in our wording. So basically, if you have a property for sale, you are an active building permit, you can have a sign on that property. You have to meet the size limitations in that zoning district. It doesn't have to say, the sign doesn't have to say that the property's for sale. It's just a sign, it can say whatever you want it to be, eggs here, whatever. It does not have to say property for sale. Event-related signage, this is where our political signs have went to. You can have a political sign up, it has to meet the square footage requirements, but it has to be removed within seven days of the election. The event-related signage does not just relate to political signage, it would relate to any other event that may be going on. Maybe a church is having a social, or you know, you're having a picnic or something like that, so that it would relate to that as well. We do prohibit temporary signs to be displayed more than 30 days unless otherwise permitted. So the otherwise permitted would be the two above it, the property for sale and the event-related signage. And then we limit those by zoning district. So now I'm gonna go by zoning districts and go through the table to tell you what has changed and what has not. Very little has changed. In the agricultural and C1 district, the accessory to residential uses, these permanent signage would mostly be related to a home occupation. We currently allow you to have four square feet. The reason it is so low is because home occupations are intent to be that. They are accessory to the residential use. So I should not be looking at your property saying, "Oh, there's a business there." It should be a residence with an accessory home occupation. And the setback is still 10 feet, and maximum height is still four. That has not changed. Now, in our agricultural zoning district, we also allow some non-residential uses. Churches, schools, farms are all in that. So this would be their square footage. And to determine this, we went through the table that we currently had. We took the highest square footage that we allowed, which was 50 square feet, and that's what we applied here. They're still allowed one freestanding sign, 50 square feet, 10 foot from the property line, and 12 foot in height. And then temporary square footage and flags. Residential district, that is the same as our A1 and C1 district. About the only thing that is different is because we have a section called subdivision signs previously, we cannot offer that. So we now allow a maximum of two monument signs for each principal road entrance into a major residential subdivision. This is also allowed in the A1 district as well for subdivisions such as Brush Fountain. This would be other subdivisions coming in. If they had a principal road entrance, they can put up a subdivision sign. That square footage was increased to 32 square feet. Previously, it was 24. Again, we have some non-residential uses in our residential districts. Most of those are allowed by special use permit, but like a church, we do have some that are allowed by Rite. We took the highest allowance for square footage. In our commercial district, we currently allow 150 square feet of business signage if you do not use a general advertising sign. General advertising sign has kind of been our equivalent to a billboard. Basically, if you had one of those on the property, you were not allowed any additional signage on the property whatsoever. The category was removed, general advertising, due to content neutrality and the lack of interest. Honestly, once people find out they can't have any additional signage, they don't wanna billboard anymore. We haven't had many requests for billboards since I've been here in 16 years. We have had one replacement due to damage. The 150 square footage remains. We reviewed the temporary square footage signage allowed, and we took the larger. So the larger square footage that was allowed is what we used, and that's the case in most of these districts. Other regulations remain the same. If you share an entrance with another business, an adjoining property, let's say you have two businesses together to share an entrance, and you share a freestanding sign, you get a 20% sign allowance bonus. That is in our existing ordinance, and it is carried over into this one. Industrial district signs remain the same, 150 square feet. The same square footage bonus applies for industrial parks. And then we also allow 32 square foot additional monument at the entrance to the industrial.
So as we mentioned earlier, the Planning Commission did discuss this at 10 previous meetings, and on that 11th, they made a recommendation. Their hearing on the, on the May 17th, had four members of the public speak, and they touched on items, including that sign ordinances are overregulation.
touched on items including that sign ordinances are overregulation, the issues for dual frontage properties, sign height questions, and then also permit requirements. The Planning Commission did make their recommendation on June 14th, that was a 5 to 0 vote. We had some commissioners absent that night. But one of the things that we spent a lot of time talking to the Planning Commission about was next steps. So we can't spend a year working on an ordinance and not see some other things that could use a little bit more study on a much finer level. So here are some of the things that we talked to them that staff would like to work on and get into the work plan as we move forward. The first is specific considerations that we might want to look at at the exit 109 area. This is important because most of you will remember, we did some significant rezonings, comprehensive plan work, and then also, it's one of our areas that we have proposed for Licker by the Drink. It's, the county's put a lot of time and energy into that, and we, it's one of our only commercial 81 exits in the county, so we want to make sure that we're treating it the way that maybe the towns would, because they have the, more of the exits and more of those considerations. Also, we definitely have looked at the unique considerations for the 460 and 465 bypass. That portion of the county, which is not huge, you leave the town of Christiansburg, you enter the county, and then shortly after, you enter the town of Blacksburg. But when those businesses, some of which were started in the 80s, went there, they had no way of knowing that a giant bypass would be in their backyard. And there's not currently a good mechanism to address the signage for that. And so, when you see over on the other side that we are looking at dual frontage properties, this is probably the main one. We know that it can impact other corner lots and things like that, but having a divided highway in your rear definitely lends itself to making sure that there's enough signage. So we already have some ideas on that, as well as things related to exit 109 and our village areas. But one of the things that staff and the commission felt really strongly about is, this guidance came out from the Supreme Court in 2015. Marty did a lot of legwork to get us started in 2016, but here we are in 2017, and we'd like to get a constitutional ordinance adopted and on the books, so that we can make sure that as we're enforcing it, we're on strong foundation. And some of these other granular issues that we know we want to look at, we can take them up on a case by case and then work through them. Another item that we talked to the commission about, that we heard about specifically, was related to window signage. We did have some input on that, and the commission really hesitated. They were, I wouldn't say indifferent, but they felt like it had been in the ordinance since the very beginning, and we had spent a lot of time talking about it. So they wanted to go ahead and leave it in the recommendation to the board and make sure that you guys knew that they had thought into it, but they would defer to you on ultimate decision. Another thing that the Planning Commission talked about, and we did this on an ordinance that we passed last year, is they wanted to commit to, a year from now, looking at what we adopted, looking at the permits we had issued, seeing how they were working, and seeing if anything did need tweaks, because we have spent a long time on this, we could spend a lot longer on it, but you're never going to have a perfect ordinance. And what they wanted to do was to get something set in motion that we could start issuing permits off of, using, making sure we were meeting those new guidelines, and then see where we are and see if we needed to take a look at. With that, that is the end of staff's presentation. We're certainly open to any questions you have before we open the hearing, and we'll be available after too.
I'll start with Supervisor Creed. Any questions? Supervisor Purvis.
That's all I can say. I think I've got to take all that in, in an effort to ask you some very important questions, but I appreciate all the work you've done. Can you tell me the basis for the Supreme Court at Reed versus a town in Arizona?
I can give you a very, very general description, not if Marty wants to give you more details, but ultimately, there was a decision that that locality was treating different signs in a different manner. So we used the example, a lot of political signs, which are actually in Virginia, protected by state code, but there's types of signs, and they were saying that temporary signs for a certain use were being treated differently than others. And ultimately, because it was based on the content of the sign, is how the ultimate ruling came about.
Yeah, it's a little more detailed. That, Fourth Circuit, they, a number of times, sign ordinances were upheld like ours, where it's content regulated, but not really, like, we classified by content, but we didn't really regulate by content. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And that's how the Fourth Circuit said, okay, we're doing things, meaning we treated political signs and contractor signs, and some event signs, and those were all based on their, on their content, but we weren't really getting into what the specific content was. Well, then, the case came out of Arizona, and the Supreme Court said, no, that approach on the First Amendment is not correct. Even if you're just regulating and not really looking at the message, but if you're treating them based on the type of message, then that's against the First Amendment. And so, all the Fourth Circuit localities, who's, who've been upheld over time, including us, had to then relook at it, and now it's just based on, like she said, the type of, is it a temporary sign, is it a permanent sign, or is it a flag sign? We don't even talk about, anything about what they, what the message may be.
I have one other question. All the, both of the towns in Montgomery County have sign ordinances?
Correct, yeah.
And?
They're updating ours, they're ongoing.
Yeah, so we are updating ours now.
Correct.
Well, I can remember several years ago that Blacksburg said that so many businesses had to remove their signs and put smaller signs in. Do you?
I don't know, that had nothing to do with the case.
Okay, all right, okay. So actually, we have some signage problems already, I mean, regs already, right? We're just having to take those that we have and make them agree with what the Supreme Court said about the case.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's very good.
And now we don't.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you for all your work.
Supervisor King?
You ready?
Ready.
I was just wondering, I do apologize when I snickered a while ago. If I have a sign out, and it takes five seconds to change, why is that my problem? Because it holds somewhere up, because they want to see what it says?
So the, the issue for signage, a lot of signage is obviously near the right-of-way, and so it is a, the problem is not that they didn't get to read the message, it's that it leads to more distracted driving. So it's the driver who is watching the sign instead of watching the reg. Just so in the same way that we don't allow it to play like a television or flashing, if it's too long, sign industry's done some studies that show that if you do something like a 10-second instead of a 5-second, the example that they used, and we have some videos we'd be glad to show you, the example that they used showed a grocery store talking about what was on sale, and so it listed the name, avocados, and then you had to wait 10 seconds to see what the sale was. And so they showed that that was too long of a time and led to more distractions than actually just the 5-second. There is a thought process that if you lengthen the timeframe, it would be less distracting, but there's been all kinds of studies evidently done that show that the ideal time is in that four-to-five second range, so it's not too fast, but it's not too slow.
I do appreciate what y'all done, I really do. I'm not going to push the issue, but I'm still trying to figure out why it's my problem.
Well, it's what we currently have, it's what the board adopted, is the 5 seconds, and we've just elected to keep it, especially after hearing that that was the recommended timer.
Okay, and if this changes, the ones that you're talking about, it's on 460 and then the bypass, the businesses, are they going to be popped in, or do they have to change too?
So no signs have to be changed based on this ordinance. If this ordinance gets adopted, and for some reason, there's not a current sign that meets the requirements, it's like any of our other signs that are just existing, non-conforming. However, I think that in that example, or many of the other examples that you use, they're all going to remain conforming. So like, we gave the example of church signs, or something that we very commonly issue signs for. We currently allow the same height, same setback, and the same area, so that's not going to be an issue. Now, signs that have been around since the 70s and 80s, those don't meet our current ordinance, so they're not going to meet this one either.
Well, I don't, just my opinion. If they've been up since then, we have no business fooling with them.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
If they've been up since the 70s and 80s, like them business over on 460 and the bypass, if they've been there for a while, we have no business fooling with them, because they've been there.
Right, and we don't.
Now.
And we actually can't, based on state code.
Okay, I can see if some, if they shut down, somebody else move in, and you can say, this is where you have to do it, them has to come down.
And that's actually governed by state code, they would not only have to leave, but it would have to be not used for two years.
Okay.
So if someone were, if they were leaving, someone were to come in within that two years, it's also a valid sign too.
Okay. And I do appreciate you bringing up the political signs. Politicians need to understand, once you run, if you're done, pull them up. And one more thing, then I'll let you go. The square footage on the flags, what kind of flags are you talking about? American flags?
No.
No. U.S. flag, or any type of flag like that is exempt.
Yeah, those are exempt.
All right. You can't have a big flag as well.
All right, there you go.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much for what you've done and all this hard work, and I hate you hadn't put up with Chris with all them dates.
Supervisor Biggs.
Well, I've come a long way since I first heard about this at the chamber committee meeting. Appreciate all your hard work. I don't really have a question at this time, maybe if, you know, I hear other public comments, you know, maybe that will trigger something, but thank you for what you've done.
Supervisor Demoss.
I have two specific items that I want to ask about, and then I actually do want to reserve the right to ask some questions after the public hearing. There's two signage examples. One, and it was up for only a brief time, and I would, I would wonder under the code if this would be classified as a sign. On 460, for a very short period of time, there was a vehicle in the air. Would that be a sign, or, it was like on a lift?
Yes, it was, yeah. And he was told to take it down.
Well, I noticed it isn't there anymore, I just didn't know if that would be something that would be regulated under the ordinance.
It's regulated on our current ordinance, and it would be regulated in our proposed ordinance also.
And then the second specific one, and I take this from spending some time in Las Vegas, but also, I've seen it in Blacksburg, is the vehicles that drive around, and it's like a truck, that's just a sign on both sides, and it's real skinny, but it's just a sign.
That is considered to be a vehicular sign. The one, the example Greg gave is what we think of when we think of people who have rail terminal magnets, or truck wraps, or van wraps, things like that, that people are using in their normal course of business. But that particular sign, if you read the definition on vehicular signs, the actual definition says, it means any sign attached to or displayed on a vehicle if the vehicle or trailer is used for the primary purpose of advertising. And then it goes on to list more, but if that were a primary purpose, and we were to receive complaints that, we would have to look into it, because those are prohibited.
Yeah, and those normally, and you may have seen them in Blacksburg too, they're normally at, at move-in time for the college students, and it's advertising like loft beds and pizza and stuff like that. But, so those would require like a temporary signage permit, or?
If those are, so if they're up and down the right-of-way, that's a little bit different, but if they're parked somewhere, and that is their sole purpose, we're to get a complaint on it, then we would issue?
Yeah, they just drive around town all day.
Yeah.
But I think, I mean, they're probably just staying in the town. I don't know if somebody would rent a vehicle like that to drive throughout the county all day.
We've not received any complaints.
They're interesting.
But there is no permit proposed for those, those are listed in our prohibited sign classifications.
Thank you.
Can I add something to your question? Does that include like when people put the big political signs in their trucks, and they put magnetic signs on the side of trucks and cars, and they're driving around? Are they parking them in a parking lot all day long? Because that happens a lot.
It does. Signage that is sort of accessory to the vehicle, because those people probably also use that for going around, or in the case of businesses, they use it for hauling things, is not something that we typically classify as a vehicular sign.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
So it appears, and I think you probably said this, that the proposed ordinance is very close or similar to the old one.
That's correct.
Back to the ordinance, and enforcing it, is that done just by complaint, or?
Our zoning ordinance is enforced on a complaint during the process.
Okay, that's all I have.
I've just got a few, and I want to highlight a little bit what you said. Including Board of Supervisors meetings and planning meetings, this has been on the agenda 15 times by my count, is that accurate?
I did not include that I did a work session item with the board.
I think you did that in December of 2016, and then I brought it up in three different board meetings, and then you've got the public hearing and 10 meetings. Have those, all those meetings have been open to the public?
Absolutely, yes.
All of those meetings have been on the Planning Commission's agenda, which is on the board's website, is that fair to say?
The Planning Commission has.
It's their separate website, they're a separate link. You've had three different meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, I'm aware of, and so, is it fair, you've reached out to the public the best way you can. In addition to that, you guys did work with the sign ordinance industry to try to see if we comply and work with them.
Yes.
Okay. And I've got, I think somebody touched on this a little bit. You talk about localities, right now, the two towns, they're not in compliance with the Constitution.
That's correct.
Have you had a chance to look over at, say, like Floyd?
I did look at Town of Floyd, their ordinance is not constitutional, so we didn't spend a lot of time doing computers.
Okay. Those are basic questions I've got, unless that spurs any other questions, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public.
I got one question, one quick, I got one question. Now, April brought that up. That cart was on the jack on 460?
Yes.
And then that was considered a sign?
Yes.
How come?
Because it had sign affixed to it, for one, and it was also advertising what they sell on the property. It was taller in the building, and it was moving, so it was classified as a sign, and then there were various sections that it didn't comply with.
There were two banners.
And it was lighted, yes.
There were two banners on it that says, I think it was Ford trucks that were like four feet by eight feet, hanging off of the truck that was spinning. And I may have been wrong about the, I know there were giant banners hanging off of the truck, and I got the complaint, or at least I had an email, saying that the lights were going down the highway, the way they were shooting down when you were driving, it was like a helicopter lighting you up.
If they took the banners off, we'd, there'd be a sign?
Would they still be selling vehicles at the property?
Yep.
Probably would still be a sign.
Okay. Thank you.
I missed that one.
All right, there's a couple of people signed up. You did not have to sign up, but we're going to go through the first of the, the people signed up to speak. Each individual will be given five minutes. Again, this is our time to listen to you throughout the evening, and as we've asked staff questions, you've had to listen to us. This is not necessarily the time that we respond to you, but our staff will be taking your name and address, and if there are some questions, we'll look to see if we can get you some answers. The first individual signed up is Sharon Scott. Please come forward, and you've got five minutes, and if you would state your name and address.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors, how are you this evening?
Great.
It seems like I've been spending a lot of time with people last few months. I am one, I'm here this evening to support what's been done. I've conferred with fellow chamber execs around the state and around the, up and down the East Coast, and our chamber board members and our members have appreciated the diligence of the staff, the work of the Planning Commission, and you as board members, as you have researched, reviewed, and sought input from reviewed, and sought input from your business community. Your scoping of this project made the best use of not only your time, but the time of your business, busy business owners, managers, and often micro-business owners. Those individuals who are small businesses, who owners who, it's one person, they don't have the time to do all this research. So to have the chart that Emily and her team have put together, showing exactly what the changes are, you cannot be more clear about what those, what the, where those changes Your changes are solid, they support the ethical philosophy of the good of all, where you're taking into consideration the safety of those who are driving by with the business owner and the residents. We appreciate your willingness to speak before chamber committees and boards on numerous occasions. The first meeting was back in December, and that included the county and both of the towns, and what they were projecting the schedule to be. Your willingness to listen and make necessary adjustments and adaptations on old 460 and 460 bypass has been greatly appreciated. We also want to see the development of the exit 109. So again, we appreciate the work that's being done there to make those adjustments, and also the adjustments in the villages. Your communications, again, have been very clear and generous, and I cannot use that word often enough. From other chamber executives around the state, what this Planning Commission is proposing is very generous. We especially appreciate the projected 12-month evaluation. At the conclusion of 12 months, we'll go back in and evaluate and review what's been done, where the, where the hiccups may be, so that we can make adjustments for the business community. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I thank you for your service, I thank the board of supervisors and the staff for the work that they've put in on this for the business community as we represent 700 members. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker signed up is John Tuttin. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is John Tuttin, and representing the Chamber of Commerce also at 1520 Franklin. As a current board member and chair of the Business Climate Committee, as well as past chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank Emily Gibson and her team for the work that they have done with the signed ordinance. As a former member of the Planning Commission, I understand the time and commitment that it has taken. This ordinance cannot please everyone, as no new regulation ever does. I think it is well thought out, and can actually make it easier to enforce, making it easier to fare to all, but also getting some uniformity to make our county look more appealing. I especially appreciate this section of the regulation that says that they will revisit it in a year in order to tweak anything that is not working. On behalf of my committee, we are in support of this document as presented.
Those are all the individuals that have signed up, but that doesn't mean that other individuals can't speak. And if you would like to address the board, again, you'll have five minutes, you need to state your name and address. If there's multiple speakers, I would ask that they, you all come forward, just have seats on the front row, and we can go one at a time. Is there individuals who would like to address the board? Please come forward, state your name and address, you're number one.
All right. My name is Marissa Sacks, I reside at 65 Mulberry Drive in Christiansburg. I also have two businesses in the town of Christiansburg, and I agree, I think they've done a fabulous job, and it's not easy to please everybody. The part that mainly concerns me is the window signage. I don't agree with it. I feel like businesses should have the right to put signage in their windows without restraints. And, let me see, I made a note here. It says it was an unfair advantage that some businesses may have more windows than others. That's life, and that's business. So I don't think that anybody should be involved in saying that that's a fair practice across the board. If I can afford a building that has 20 windows on the front, that's fabulous. If another business comes along and they can only afford one that has one window, you do the best with what you have. And in the line of small businesses, we have to fight 10 times as hard as anybody else to get our business name out there, do the best we can, sell to people, so we can also become profitable and good citizens. And I think if you regulate that, then it's going to stifle the growth of the business that you're talking about. And small businesses employ a lot of people in this area. So if they are turning this over to you all to consider this, I'd just like for you to take that into consideration. I feel like the signage in our windows might just be going a little too far. You know, we have coverages on our windows in here. I mean, according to this, you would be regulating that, and I do think that that's unfair. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir. I believe you can forward. Please state your name and address, and you've got five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jonathan Taylor, I live at 685 School Lane here in Christiansburg. I just wanted to bring up some facts pertaining to the digital sign portion. If you are a business, and you have multiple things you want to advertise, let's just say four separate screens, if it is up for five seconds on a 35 mile an hour per road, it takes 342 yards for you to be able to see all four different signs change. Does that not pose a higher risk for distraction, putting it at five seconds rather than three seconds for people to be able to see the signs and advertisements in the road? Even if you only have two messages at five seconds, 35 miles per hour off the roadway is one and a half foot off the road. The other question I had, more or less, would be the Blacksburg transit, the ads on the side of the buses. Does that fall within that mobile advertising, or are they cleared for that one permitted? And a final statement pertaining to everything that was said tonight, I ask you all to consider who this benefits. As it's currently written, I find it hard to believe that it benefits consumers, I find it hard to believe that it benefits residents, business owners, or tourism that comes into Montgomery County, Christiansburg, or Blacksburg. Thank you for your time.
Is there any other individuals that would like to address the board on this issue? Seeing no one else coming forward, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing. And then the next item on our agenda is public address. And this is where you can discuss with the board anything that you would like to present before. But before we move to public address, what we did have is our action in regards to, there was no one who spoke out against the Graves property.
I'd like to go ahead with it.
And it's pretty non-controversial, is it anyone, is there a motion that we would take that up before we?
Yeah, yeah.
Who's making that motion?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, and I'm looking at, Marty.
There is a tab that I put in the, what I propose a resolution approving the boundary adjustment in.
Under Tab A.
Tab A?
Yep. And so, the board so chooses that, that's what we recommend.
I saw that.
There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? That's a little acre and a half piece of property that's the old Graves area.
701 Graves.
Okay, yep, right there. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven hours.
We get back to agenda report here. And so, now we'll move on. Since there was discussion in regards to the sign ordinance, should we take that up in the first meeting in July? I know we've got some other things on the second meeting in July. Is that something that the board would like to see, and that'll give us a little time to consider everything?
Yeah.
Yes. All right, so we'll try to take up the sign ordinance, this is the first meeting in July, and I'm looking at our planning staff, is that, okay. Before we move on, as chair and as liaison to the Planning Commission, we've got really dedicated staff that's done a fantastic job and worked a lot of hours. But there's a lot of, there's, the Planning Commission itself is made up of individual citizens who donated hours and hours and hours of time, not just in those meetings, but getting prepared for those meetings. And as liaison, I get to see that every, every meeting. And so, I, as a citizen of Montgomery County, am very thankful for those folks who volunteer on that Planning Commission, and I appreciate the work that they've done. Now we move on to public address. There is no one signed up for public address, but if anyone would like to address the board on any issue whatsoever, you'll have five minutes, and just please state your name and address. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close public address. I don't believe that there's an addendum.
No, sir.
Is there a motion in regards to consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven hours.
Next on our agenda is work session, is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven hours.
We're in work session, and we have one item on the agenda, Falling Branch Elementary School Expansion. And I know we've got a couple of folks from the school board, and I know that the school board met this evening at approximately 6 o'clock to approve the letter that was submitted to us. It indicates that they're requesting $9.85 million, specifically $9,857,087 in regards to the expansion of Falling Branch. And I don't know if there's any questions that folks would like to ask the school board, I know that there's members here, and Mr. Lyons is here on behalf of the school board, but in speaking with the superintendent, I know that they're wanting to move this forward as quickly as possible to break ground. And this comes in, as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, about $500,000 less than we were projecting. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Give or take a thousand or two. Is there any questions that any of the board members would like to ask of the school board or the school board staff?
The bid includes everything that we've been shown, like everything that they, that you wanted for the school.
Yeah, including, Mr. Lyons, thank you very much.
I'll take the questions. It does include all of our FFNE, everything that we need, playground equipment, it also includes some of those renovations that were supposed to be made as well, some of which we've already approved, we've already started, actually, the roof is pretty much completed. But it does include all of those different things that we, that we've asked for, and obviously the contingency budget.
Is it going to get rid of all the mobile units?
Yes, yes. You'll notice that the mobile units are part of the phase, are part of actually the first phase of moving all of those and getting those out of there ASAP. We hope to have some of the buildings open, Dan, you can kind of come up here and give us a little bit of a timeline if you don't mind. But yes, the hope is that we can have some of these buildings up and operational relatively quickly, so that we can be rid of all of the mobile units ASAP.
Thank you.
Sir, good evening. If you remember from the joint meeting, we had different phases, trying to get the first three classrooms opened by New Year's. So when we come back after Christmas break, we'll have the first three. Then the remaining two large additions of classrooms, they were be finished by next, the middle of next March. And the renovated spaces, the spaces existing that will be renovated, they'll move into those new classrooms, and then the spaces will be renovated, reconfigured, and everything is scheduled to be finished summer of 2018.
Any further questions of any? Now, I want to make sure I'm saying this correctly, you're hoping that we move as fast as possible, so y'all can break ground as soon as possible, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I have, I think folks, there's a proposed resolution before the board, has everybody had an opportunity to take a look at that to see if there's any questions of staff?
I think this is really exciting.
I think so.
I think so as well. I love hearing things coming in under budget, as far as this. Well, I think we're, yeah. And this is monies that we've set aside, we've been setting aside for future school capital, it's there, it's waiting, it's in the bank, this is what we're expecting to do, this.
It's where the money falls.
Yes, exactly.
Funds we've set aside previously. The board has set aside previous. I just wanted that to get out so people don't think we're adding. Yes.
Absolutely.
There's a, I believe there's a typo on this resolution.
Okay.
No, we don't do that.
At the top, it says pennies from 2016 tax increase, and at the bottom, it's 2013, or is that two separate?
No, it.
It's supposed to be 2013, right?
And you're right.
It's the two cents that's been set aside.
Since 2013, so yes, or that, that line should read pennies from 2013 tax increase.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I was going to ask that very thing, is it include those taxes, those two cents?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, I think we're going to have a motion when we come out of work session, I'm just taking a wild guess. Is there, is there a motion to come out of the work session?
Motion. Second.
The work session, yeah. There's a motion and a second. All those, any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven hours.
Go sign a contract.
Go do it.
Next item on our agenda is new business, specifically contract modification with Thompson and Litten for the Reiner Fire Station project. I'll look to the county administrator, Mr. Meadows.
Glad to provide some background on this. As you're aware, when we initially began talking about the Reiner Fire Station project many months ago, we had a project budget estimate of about $3.7 million, with an A&E fee of approximately $346,000. As we brought on Thompson and Litten to begin evaluation of the plans for the facility, we realized that our, our planning budget was significantly lower than it needed to be because of the space that's needed in the new facility. The initial facility was projected to be 13,000, well over 13,000 square feet. After meeting with the fire department and reviewing the standards that are required for today's facilities and whatnot, the building's going to need to be closer to 19,000 square feet. Because of that dramatic increase in the size of the building, that results in an increased A&E fee, because A&E fees are based on square footage and estimated cost of construction. So what you have before you this evening is a request to increase the A&E budget from 346,140 to 512,640, so we can keep moving forward with Thompson and Litten to get the building designed, so we can get it bid out.
Is there any questions? I'm just putting it out generally. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Aye.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
He's from Loudoun County. He actually is a branch manager at one of the libraries there. And after he gets here and sort of gets settled in, he'll be making the rounds of coming to talk to our, you know, introduce himself to our Board and the Floyd County Board of Supervisors. And I think there's probably going to be some kind of little reception for him. So I just wanted to bring you up to date on that. I did pass on to the Board our discussion from Monday, that Monday night when we were talking about priorities, about, you know, the, I guess, the sort of the idea that Chris brought up about, you know, if looking at Reiner area for a possible, you know, library. That's something they had never considered, and they were very concerned about, of course, how would that be funded? Because right now with their budget, they can only fund what they can fund. And they were also concerned about what would that building even be suitable for that or not, or how much would have to be done to make it suitable? So I just told them that was the idea that was floated, and now that they're aware of it. So, you know, if you run into them, they're aware of it.
Thank you.
That's it.
Supervisor Demoss?
Three things, and they'll be fairly quick. One, the Mount Tabor Ruritane Club is having a fish fry on Saturday, July the 8th. That's at Slushers Chapel up Mount Tabor Road from 5:00 to 7:00. I'm always very proud to support and promote that event because it's such a wonderful community organization, and I'm very pleased to be a member. And then other Mount Tabor Ruritane Club news, please come to the July 4th parade in the town of Blacksburg. That's 2:00 on Tuesday, July 4th, following with celebrations pretty much for the remainder of the day at Municipal Park. Let me backtrack. After the parade, there's a free movie screening at The Lyric that's also sponsored by the Ruritane Club. And then celebrations will start in Blacksburg's Municipal Park. This year, I especially encourage citizens to come out to that event because we aren't sure what the future of the old Blacksburg High School site will be, but if it is developed, it might be the last time that we have the opportunity to see fireworks on that site. So it could be a fairly momentous occasion. And then finally, I sent an email to all of you sometime over the weekend, and this is just an update on Appalachian Power's request to the State Corporation Commission for the rider REO, which concerned competitive renewable energy providers and whether or not Appalachian Power would be able to, I guess, remove competition for the market, from the market and only offer, the only offering then to citizens would be renewable power through Appalachian Power. The hearing examiner has recommended rejection of rider REO to the SEC. That should please this Board because we did send a letter to the SEC requesting that they reject rider REO, so that's a little bit of follow-up information there. That's it.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Shepherd, another board. Supervisor King?
I got a small one, and I might be poking the bear, but I feel I need to say this. After our last meeting last Monday night, it wasn't a couple of days later, and newspaper, I'm not going to mention the newspaper, front page, Board of Supervisors argue over politics, or whatever it said. Partisan. Partisan. You know, there's a difference up here, Republicans and Democrats. But number one, we all live in Montgomery County. Seven of us sitting up here do the best we can for our district and the county. And it just gets frustrating when they don't say the good things that we do together. I mean, these men and women can tell you, we don't want a pat on the back, but we saved hundreds of jobs. There were several companies going to move out of Montgomery County. We stuck together, not only us, but our staff. We got to help the staff here at Montgomery County, and they work hard. They work long hours. You seen two ladies here, three ladies, one in the animal shelter. I apologize, Ms. Carol. They wasn't getting paid to be here tonight. So we have a good staff. And as I mentioned, for the jobs that we protect in the saving here in the county, there was a couple of companies going to move out of the county. Our staff worked hard to keep them here, and as seven people up here, we voted to work with them, and we kept them here. There's a company right here in Christiansburg, they could have moved to another state, but we worked together. Sure, we're going to have our differences. I told Ms. April when she first got on, I said, there's a couple of things you need to know. Don't take things personal and mean you're going to disagree on things. Don't still be your friend. We're going to work together. So I hope the media sometime will check into things that we do work together on, not just our differences.
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of things along those lines. There were some real positives, I thought, that we're having staff look on to see what we can do in the next six months. Mary's already taken the first step, and that was just to see with the Rock Library Board about the feasibility of using, as we see the new fire station get built out of Reiner, watch the rescue squad get moved in, there's going to be a vacant building there just to see if it's feasible to be able to have a library there, a satellite library or the like. That was something that really was, all of us wanted to see, at least explore that possibility. When you look at other things, about reaching out to work on our relationships with the two towns and having it a function where we're going to be donating nine and a half acres to the town of, or 9.75 acres, let me correct that, to the town of Blacksburg, or maybe doing an event there. Staff is going to be looking into it, maybe some water melons, some ice cream, maybe we'll all just sign the deed right there. We'll need to make sure we get a notary there and hand that deed over to the town of Blacksburg and work on those relationships. Talk about groundbreaking down in Charlesville, working with our staff to deal with compression issues and the like over the next six months, where we've got some staffing issues, where we've had freezing. It was a positive meeting. There was some sparks. It would be alive if I said otherwise. But 90% of that meeting was very, very positive, and sometimes around the dinner table on Thanksgiving Day, you might get into a few sparks, but overall, the meal was good. And so I would say that sometimes we're a little bit like a family. We do fuss at one another occasionally, but we're still all trying to work for the best of Montgomery County. That being said, there's no other business, and this meeting is adjourned.
I am.
I'm working.